Motion by Jim, second by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call please. Selectmen Priest.
Aye.
Selectmen Brannan.
Aye.
Chairman Randy.
Aye.
Selectmen Tigges.
Aye.
Selectmen Hogan.
Aye.
There you go. All right, let's see, 106. Paul?
Oh, 160.
I'm 160, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight we have a couple of appointments to committees. First up, we have a couple of additional resident members for the Cyber Security Committee. I know that you've reviewed their applications and I just want to say how amazing it is to see the talented people we have living in the town who are willing to contribute their time to help us. And with that, I would hereby appoint David Hughes and Steve Nowicki. Apologize to Steve for mispronouncing that, I'm sure, but to the Cyber Security Committee and requested the board waive its standard 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Bob, second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Against? 5-0-0, Betty.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Chairman, is a reappointment to the Cultural Council. This resident needs no introduction to the board as she's been volunteering since probably before I was born. To top it off, she's always a pleasure to work with. And with that introduction, I hereby appoint Joyce Fay to the Cultural Council and requested the board waive its standard 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Favored? 5-0-0, Betty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving right along. Appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight we have Chief Kent here. Is he here? No? Okay. So it's a simple one, so I'll cover for him. Officer Ferguson is, Charles Ferguson is retiring and Chief Kent wishes to appoint him as a special police officer. Congratulations to Officer Ferguson on his well-deserved retirement. And so with that, I hereby appoint Charles Ferguson to the position of special police officer in the Burlington Police Department and request that the board of selectmen waive the standard 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Bob and Jim, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Against? Opposed?
Uh, for the next one.
Before you move on, real quick, I just throw a quick note to Mr. Ferguson. He's been a great role model to the police department. I don't know how long ago he was hired, but probably long before me around this town, right?
Thirty-plus.
So I just want to say thank you to him for the great job he did and I'm sure that the police department has something in store for him later on.
Yes, yes.
So just want to say thank you. Mr. Ferguson did a great job. I know he's not out there tonight, but just wanted to mention it. Okay. Anybody else would like to say anything about? You work with him. You don't say anything at all?
Well, he was appointed a special in 1982 and intermittent in 87 and went full-time in 88. So it's been a pleasure serving alongside of him and graduating high school together too. So if that's any indication.
The guy's in the same age.
How long ago was?
He looks good.
Thanks, Joe.
That had to be said, I'm sorry. Anybody else? No, we're good. All right, Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight we have Chief Yetman and Assistant Chief Patterson here for an appointment in the Fire Department.
Evening. Yes, Mr. Chairman. So we bring before you tonight, again, we're still trying to fill vacancies, current vacancies in the Fire Department. So it's an ongoing saga. We got a list from civil service. We brought some people in. We did an orientation, which is typically what we do for potential new employees. Had them fill out application, brought them in for pre-employment interview. Then we go and do a background interview and a background investigation, which is conducted by Assistant Chief Patterson. So we're bringing for you tonight, this gentleman's name is Benjamin Elwell, for the position of firefighter paramedic. Ben is a Gloucester resident. He attended Gloucester Public Schools. He is married. His wife, Jeanne, is with him tonight. He attended Salem State College, went for criminal justice, but he saw the light. Now he's going to the fire service. Went to Elite Medical Educators Emergency Medical Technician Program, Northern Essex Community College, where he got his paramedic program and has worked for both Bowport and Lyons Ambulance Service, which he's currently employed by Bowport. So I would like to ask your agreement for appointing Ben Elwell to the Burlington Fire Department as a firefighter paramedic.
And with the chief's recommendation, I hereby appoint Benjamin Elwell to the position of firefighter in the Burlington Fire Department and request that the board of selectmen waive the standard 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second?
So moved by Bob, second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
And abstained? 5-0-0, Betty.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Congratulations. Is he here?
Is he here?
Oh, good.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks, sir.
Welcome.
Stay right up there. We're gonna do our traditional picture tagging here. Chief, you wanna get up there? Ready? Charlie Rich.
Welcome, media. Thank you.
All right.
Just on a quick side note before we move on, the next one, it's nice to see the Fire Department all here, support. It's, usually we get the police hand, covers the back room. This has turned out to be a great town for support for everybody, police and fire. So thank you guys for all showing up tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I don't know where Chief Yetman's going, but he should come back up. As you all know, Chief Yetman is retiring at the end of the month after forty-something years of dedicated service to the town. The department's planning a celebration for him, the public, on August 29th. But I think this is likely to be his last Board of Selectmen's meeting. And I know I personally want to take this opportunity to thank the chief for his service to the town, but more importantly, to thank Steve for his friendship over the years. You really are a class act and you're gonna be missed around here. So I just wanted to thank you and embarrass you at your last meeting, so.
So before we move on, I'm sure that the guys all want to say something special. I don't know what special's gonna be, but I'm gonna actually start with Michael, where he's been working with you for the tenure that you two have been together. So, Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Steve. Paul said forty-something. I don't think anyone, you've been around so long, we've sort of lost count of how many years you've actually been with the town, but I do believe it's forty-two years if I'm not mistaken.
I'm in my forty-second.
I've had the privilege of working alongside with you my entire thirty-year career and it's certainly been a pleasure of mine to have been able to do that. You've accomplished some rather longstanding issues that we've had within the department in the past few years, you and Assistant Chief Patterson, notably the new fire station, the paramedic program. During my time on this board, we've also been, done quite well under your leadership, both you gentlemen, apparatus, manning, equipment that we have there. Burlington continues to be used as a conk by other communities. We're really a model for most departments, eastern Massachusetts and beyond. So thank you, Steve, and good luck in your retirement and forward to Mike taking over pretty soon.
This one is gonna go with seniority.
It's always difficult when someone, and Steve and I worked as department heads for many years before I retired, and it's everything it's cracked up to be, and I hope you enjoy the hell out of it, Steve.
Looking forward.
Steve, professionally, I'd like to thank you again for your forty-plus years of service. We've worked side by side for years. Sometimes you can, you don't see the day-to-day changes, but if you look at a snapshot of when you started as chief and you look at a snapshot of where the department is today, that gives you a better idea of your accomplishments and how you've gone from point A to point B. Now that you're retired, maybe Annie and I have a chance at winning our fire, police fire golf tournament because you've beat us every year since we've been playing. You and Elaine have beat Annie and I, so maybe I have a shot at it now. But congrats, Steve, and thanks for all you've done for the town.
What can I say that hasn't been said? I'm sure Joe will come up with something. No, Chief, thank you for everything that you've done. You know, your service in this town has been greatly appreciated and leading the Fire Department and just doing a great job. As a resident, I thank you. And I truly hope that you enjoy every day of your retirement because from what I understand, it's pretty awesome. I have a long way to go, but I've heard, I've heard good things.
Thank you. So Chief, let me just say a few things real quick, and I will not embarrass anybody here. I started up in town meeting years ago and you were utmost professional at that point. And then I went to the Board of Appeals and once again, questions I've had to ask. You were nothing but professional the whole time. Then here I sit on the Board of Selectmen and once again, the same thing has happened. As far as the golf tournament goes, I don't know how professional you are out on that golf course. So I'm not gonna, I might be referring to Jimmy to ask a few questions about that, but I'll hold off on that one. I just want to say thank you for everything you've done for this town. And Mike's right. These guys have hit all the key points, everything you've done for this town, what you've made the Fire Department into. We just hope that our next chief can step up and do the exact same thing. That's what we're looking for on the next one. So, Mike, I know you gotta put in for it and I hope you fill those shoes and go beyond it. So Chief, thank you very much and good luck. All right, thank you.
Just a dovetail on what Jim said, to talk about from when Chief started to where it is now. I've seen pictures back then from when he started and the department wore dungarees as their pants. So we've come a long way since then and he's experienced it all. So thank you again, Steve. You're gonna be missed. With that said, we still have the business of running the department and we've been fortunate to have Assistant Chief Patterson here to fill in in this capacity over the years. And we wish to appoint him in an interim capacity to run the department while we conduct interviews of internal candidates for the department. So I hereby appoint Michael Patterson to the position of interim fire chief in the Burlington Fire Department and request that the board of selectmen waive the standard 15-day waiting period.
Second.
So moved by second. So moved by Bob, second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Against? 5-0-0, Betty. Good luck. I don't know where to start. There's a lot. There's a lot. So let me start with this one. Congratulations.
Thank you.
On this aspect. So, and good luck. The group guys behind you.
Absolutely.
I'm sure are supporting you and good luck with the next venture.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah. Last photo opportunity. Well said.
You guys want to talk real quick? Want to get too carried away? It's an interim.
You can all stay. Remember when? Okay. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up is not so much an appointment, but an update on the treasurer-collector position. And for that one, I'll turn it over to you.
So Brian came down tonight and he's gonna have a little discussion and we're gonna have your reading and.
I don't think I can top that.
I don't know, I don't know where to start with it, but Brian, you're up. How's that?
Thanks, thanks, Joe. I appreciate it.
Brian, could you wait one second?
Sure.
So some of the people who are leaving.
Yeah, that sounds good. Go up. Might be a little difficult to hear me, that's for sure.
Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I gave Town Administrator Paul Sagarino a letter this morning and I would like to inform the board that I have decided to retire as the elected treasurer-collector for the town of Burlington on June 30th, 2020, which will give us ten months to obviously pick a replacement and work out all the details with the board. As you guys know, the law was changed at the last town election to, that you guys have the authority to make an appointment to that position. I was re-elected for a three-year term until such an appointment is made. I obviously would like to stay elected until June 30th, give us time to make that decision after forty-four years of service. It's been my distinct honor to serve the residents of this great town that I've grown up and lived since 1955. It's obviously a difficult decision to leave the position that I love and enjoy. It was never like going to work every day. I just enjoyed going to work and it wasn't like a job. It's just, you know, a great opportunity to serve the residents and a town that I love. Grew up here. It's obviously, it's for Steve and everybody else and Bob, as you all know, it's, it is nice to retire, spend more time with my wife and family. But I wanted the board to know, I am committed to helping the selectmen find my replacement and I would like to serve on the selection committee that makes that decision of recommendation. I will work closely with the selectmen, my successor, to ensure a smooth transition to continue the financial success of this great town. As Paul knows and I've mentioned last year, the reason I changed my mind of not retiring, I had mentioned a couple of years ago, thinking of retiring was because of all the changes, Paul taking over as town administrator and hiring a new town accountant, John D'Nizio. I think everything has gone really smoothly. I feel really good about the position the town's in with those two individuals taking those responsibilities. I think they've done a great job and will continue to do a great job. I look forward to working with both of them during the next ten months as we work through this transition. I think that, you know, we have a few things to accomplish. I've been keeping a monthly log of everything that I do so that whoever does get the job, I'll be able to hopefully, you know, turn that over to him and work with that person for as long as the board wants me to, to help make that transition work. We've initiated some, some big changes within the town in relation to some of the financial things with three new software products that we're introducing. We're working with John D'Nizio on those. Tyler Content Manager, which is a document storage capability for the town, which I think is very important for the future of the town, and employee self-service payroll access program to eliminate paper payroll stubs and to get everybody on direct deposit, you know, bring, I think, bring the town into the 21st century in regards to all those things and IT. And we get all these software products approved at town meeting last year, so it's just a matter of working with, you know, Munis and Tyler to initiate them. And we've begun that process already, John and I. And then Citizen Self- Service, which is an online billing for real estate, personal property excise for the citizens. We now have iCloud, but this would be a new software product where we real-time when people make direct payments, online payments for their, all their payments, their real estate, personal property, excise, and water and sewer. So a lot of initiatives we would like to get accomplished, which I think will be important before I leave. So we're working on those. So any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer.
No, I don't have any questions, Brian. I just, I'm just, I'm sure that the guys have something to say. I know we've gone through this a little bit before, but we're gonna talk to Paul and John. We'll get together with Brian and figure out a game plan as far as, you know, the newspaper, want to put it out there, want to start, put the applications ahead for trying to find a new treasurer. That's, that stuff that we can do on the side. On a Monday, we'll get together for that. On another note, Brian, I've said this before to you, I think I speak for a lot of residents. I'm not saying I speak for all of them, but I can't thank you enough for the job you've done in this town. You've spent forty-two years on this town and you're part of the reason why it's the way it is today. I know for a fact, twenty years ago, when someone I know had problems, you were the first one there to help him out with it. You've helped out more people in this town than I can ever imagine. And you've kept it all to yourself. You've never been one to look for it or a pat on the back or take me out to dinner or you could do this for me now. You've always been humble and true to your job as far as what the job entails. On a personal note, Brian, you've become a great friend over the years and that's more important than any job you can ever have. Friendships are great. And I know my family personally, my dad, myself, just want to say thank you for everything that you've done for our family and for this town. So I'll leave it up to the guys now. We'll start over here.
Appreciate that, Joe. Thank you.
We've done better in the past than we have the last year, Brian. And I'm sorry that it came to discourse, but, you know, I've always admired what you've done for the town and you're going to be missed. As a department head, as all department heads, they've turned to you for information from time to time and you've always been there. So I've always appreciated that. And, you know, it's, it's gonna be tough having somebody else in that office. Thank you.
Well, it's pretty tough losing two forty-plus-year employees at the same time. But again, Brian, my thanks to you for what you've done, not only for the town, but for the community. I know you spearhead the religious education program at St. Margaret's. So you do, Brian does a lot of things in the town and around the town. So from me to you, thank you for all you've done for the town, for the people of the town, for the children of the town. And I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Michael?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Brian, thank you. The guys have summed it up pretty, pretty well. And certainly always appreciated your open-door policy. Whenever I had questions, I was always welcomed into your office without, without delay. So I appreciate you giving, giving us the timeline to work with now. It gives us an opportunity to prepare job description, set up our interview team and all that stuff. And you've indicated that you'd be there for us to make that transition a smooth one. And I certainly appreciate your cooperation in that end. And I can also say, as Joe did, that I also value our friendship over the years. And I wish you and Gail much enjoyment in the, in the coming years.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Curtin, the topic of your retirement has been talked about time and again the past couple of years. So Mr. Sagarino, let's just be sure that when Mr. Curtin does retire on June 30th, 2020, it is not a lackluster retirement. For forty-four years of service, despite the conversation of it for the past couple of years, you know, you've, you've served this town amicably. I thank you for that. And I do appreciate you not only offering your time during the transition as we seek out this new treasurer-treasurer collector, but also for taking the time to take a monthly log and, you know, to jot down what you do on a monthly basis so that that transition will go even more smoothly. So I really do appreciate that. And I'll say thank you now and I'm sure I'll say thank you again several more times between now and your retirement date. But, you know, thank you.
Thank you, Nick. I appreciate the support of the board. I really do. Thank you very much, all of you. There's no I in team, as we all know, and that's why Burlington is the community that we all love because we work as a team. Everybody works together. We wouldn't be where we are today if it wasn't for the cooperation and the, I think, the efforts of all the elected officials, town meeting, and everybody that, you know, works in the best interest of the residency and the town. I think most of the people that live here know that and that's why they stay and that's why we are who we are. So I appreciate the support. I look forward to working with you guys over the next ten months and we'll, we'll take it one day at a time.
Paul, do you have anything you want to add?
I just wanted to say, I'm thankful for Brian. First off, for he was on the committee that hired me. So as, as we both like to tease, and I don't know if it's true or not, but Brian has always told me that Bob Mercier liked the other guy better.
He did?
It was his vote. So it was his vote that put me in here and.
Gianino and I both said to him, we want Sagarino. It's a good hire and look at where he is now.
So as the, as the accountant and treasurer, we work together very closely and, you know, that relationship, we're a check and balance on each other. So there were some ups and downs in that, as there should be when you're the check and balance on each other. But one thing that always stuck with me is that Brian, I've never seen anybody care more about the town than Brian. So at the end of the day, always decisions were guided to try to do the best thing for the town. And you've had an unbelievable career. And thank you for, you know, all that we've accomplished together as a finance team. And, you know, I wish you well in your future retirement.
So before.
Blessed.
Before we end this, Betty, you work very closely with the two offices. Would you like to pocket them now or would you like to?
Thank you very much. So I'm gonna move on, Mr. Bart.
Thank you, Betty. And I appreciate you always putting me at the top of the agenda so I didn't have to wait around two hours to be heard.
One, one quick question, if I may. Are you grandpa or grandpa?
I'm grandpa.
Grandpa, okay.
Yeah. And my wife and I, my son and daughter-in-law just told us we're gonna have our second grandchild in February. So we're gonna have a girl. We have a grandson, Liam Brendan, and we're gonna now have a girl. So hopefully that will keep us busy. So plenty to do as you know, Bob, being retired. That was one of your highlights of retiring.
I'm busier, I'm busier now than when I was working.
Everybody says they don't know how, they haven't had time to work.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Brian. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Paul, move right along.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have John Sanchez here for a promotion and then an appointment in the Public Works Department. As always, I'd like to thank all the employees from Public Works for showing up. We really appreciate your support for your current and future coworkers. And that I'll turn it over to John for his presentation to the board.
Mr. Chairman, tonight, we are here to recommend one of our employees for a promotion within the Buildings and Cemeteries Division. Frank Anderson, who is here tonight, who is the new superintendent of Buildings and Cemeteries, and I completed interviews of six candidates for the job of lead foreman in Buildings and Cemeteries. After looking at all the requirements for the position and the qualifications, I'm recommending Nicole Noregian Runyon for the position of lead foreman in the Buildings and Cemeteries Division. Nicole is currently employed with the Buildings and Cemeteries Division as a maintenance craftsman. During her time in the division, she has shown the qualities needed for this position as well as the skills and interests to complete the repairs on projects in both Buildings and Cemeteries. She worked previously with the Fire Department and joined our PoliWorx Department in 2016. She has a constructor supervisor's license as well as CDL license and Hoisted licenses, all required for the job. In addition, she has an EMT certification. I look forward for Nicole actually being promoted to that position and I'd recommend her effective next week.
Thank you, John. With John's recommendation, I hereby appoint Nicole Noregian Runyon to the position of lead foreman in this Burlington Department of Public Works Buildings and Cemeteries Division and request that the board of selectmen waive the standard 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Bob, second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained. Abstained. One. So 4-0-1, Betty.
Can we ask her to turn on the air conditioning when she comes up here?
I think, I think she's here. I think, I think she's here. I think she's here. Would you like her up?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That's Nicole.
If I may, real quick, it just goes to show that you're a product owner environment, coming from two great people and issues in charge now. I don't know how you guys feel, but that's fantastic.
So as I know, I will say, I checked records, and I've only been here for about twelve years, but I went back to see, and I believe this is our first female supervisor that we have within the DPW Union, so it's, it's a big moment tonight.
Outstanding.
Second?
Yes.
So with the retirement of Arlene in our office, we had the position to be filled. We did some readjustment of personnel, and tonight, I'm recommending Danielle McKenney for the position of part-time office assistant. Now, we had ninety-seven applicants for this job, and we actually completed two rounds of interviews to get to, to Danielle. Danielle's experience includes all the qualities we're looking for in this job, including customer service, office skills, typing, working in the front office, et cetera. She's a graduate of the UMass, University of Massachusetts with a liberal arts and criminal justice bachelor's degree. She, until, I believe recently, I believe early this week, if not last, she worked as an administrative assistant at the Middlesex Sheriff's Office. And we're looking forward to have him start, and actually immediately, so, and she's with us tonight as well.
And with John's recommendation, I hereby appoint Danielle McKenney to the position of part-time office assistant in the Department of Public Works, and ask that the board of selectmen waive the standard fifteen-day waiting period.
First, let's think about Bob and Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, against? Five zero zero, Betty.
Thank you.
Congratulations. She is?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome. Ninety-seven applications. That's incredible.
Incredible. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have a recognition for a couple of our DPW employees, Patrick Duran and Michael DeSimone. These gentlemen placed first at the Mass Highway Association's Driving Skills and Training Competition, defeating over thirty other teams from around the state. In September, they will represent the state in a national competition. Although it is affectionately known as the Snowplow Rodeo, this is a very serious competition. And what this highlights for me is what I want, and what I want our residents to know, is our employees strive to be great at what they do. This is an acknowledgement of what I see every day across the town, and it makes me proud of the hard work and dedication that our employees put into their jobs. Congratulations to Pat and Mike, and good luck at the Nationals. I'm sure the team from Minnesota is pretty good at this, but I really have faith that you guys can bring home the championship. And at this point, I'll turn it over to John for some additional comments.
Yes, thank you. So the Massachusetts Highway Association is, is a group of, of, that includes cities and towns and members from just about all the communities in the state. So the Mass Highway Association has a, an event that they do every year, it's called the Driver Skills and Safety Event. This year, it was held on July 17th at the Massachusetts Mountain Ski Area. The event is designed to promote teamwork, safety awareness, and vehicle operating skills in a competitive setting. Like I said earlier, the event is open to all towns in Massachusetts. The Mass Highway Association sponsors and sends the winning team to represent Massachusetts at the national level competition event. This year is the 2019 Western Snow and Ice Conference and Snow Rodeo, which is gonna be held in Loveland, Colorado. Our Highway Division team finished number one, beating over thirty teams at the Town Administrator Set, and participated in the truck event, and also qualified to represent the state. So they will be representing the entire state of Massachusetts at this national event. During the event, they will not just participate in the snow rodeo, but also they will enroll in the conference, and they will actually take seminars on snow and ice systems that they have, whether it's plow, whether it is chemical treating, et cetera. So not only they're gonna go and participate as, as a sort of, but also learn while they are there during the three-day event. So with that, we have the two members of the team, as well as a large portion of my department, which is behind me, so Mike DeSimone and Patrick Duran, if you want to help with the front, please.
So before we get going here, let the other guys speak, we have something for you guys. So me and Mike, Mike, you want to read that now? Is there anything to read on that?
Yeah, let me, let me read this quickly.
And then we're gonna come out there.
Step in front and make these presentations and perhaps photo opportunity, and then let the rest of the board say a few words. This is a certificate of rec, of recognition. It's hereby presented to Michael DeSimone and Patrick Duran in recognition of achieving first place at the Mass Highway Association Snowplow Rodeo Driver Skill and Safety Competition on July 17, 2019, given by the Board of Selectmen. Under, under our hand is 12th day of August, 2019. So we have one of these for each of you, and Joe's got a couple of other items.
It's about all of it for the rest of the... Okay, that was a long walk for us. So anyway, I just want to say thank you. I'm gonna let the board start, and then whatever I think I need to say afterwards, I will. So we'll start with Nick right now.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In a word, guys, awesome. I mean, awesome that you went and did it, awesome that you came in first place, awesome that you're going to Colorado to represent the state, you know, awesome that you guys are skilled and provide those skills to this community. We're fortunate, like Paul said, like we all, all we say, we are very fortunate to have very skilled and talented people working for the town of Burlington, and this, this shows it. You know, we, we joke, we call it, you know, the, you know, Snowplow Rodeo, you know, but, you know, there's, there's nothing but real hard skill here that you gentlemen have. And, you know, I, I think I speak for all of us in the residents of Burlington when I said that we're lucky to have you. So congratulations, and do us proud, Colorado.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we've, historically, we've done pretty well on this event, year in and year out, but this year, you take home the, the gold, so to speak, here in Massachusetts. So it doesn't surprise me one bit. It doesn't surprise me one bit. I know Mike and Pat pretty well, and I know the entire DPW team works hard every day, and they take their job seriously every day, middle of the night, rain, snow, you've heard me say it before, really truly appreciate what you guys and everybody in, in our DPW does. So good luck, good luck out in Colorado.
Again, congratulations on both of you. At, at, to echo what Mike said, a lot of people like a white Christmas. When it snows on Christmas, you guys are there, so you guys have no holidays, really, unfortunately. But congratulations, congratulations to both of you. Thank you for representing the town, representing the state, and hopefully see you guys back here in October to give you a couple more shirts and blacks. Good luck.
I, I hope people appreciate how difficult it is to drive this equipment, never mind excel at what they ask you to do in this competition. We have a, a great group of people here who take care of this town, and like everybody says, we, we appreciate that, and it's gonna be very proud watching for the information to come to us after the competition to see how you've done. And, you know, I know John is very proud, and when he was reading that in addition to the, the, the competition, you'll be taking classes in order to bring back information, and I looked out and I saw the two of you going, "Oh, not really." Congratulations, honest to God. Yeah, take care.
So I, there's really nothing left to say, to be honest with you. Everyone's kind of said everything. I just want to say thank you, and congratulations on what you've accomplished for the town. It's wonderful. Have fun out there. That was glasses.
Yeah, forget the glasses.
The glasses. Hold on one second, we're not quite done. Paul, anything you'd like to add?
Quick question, do they still have snow when you use it in July? How's that, how's that work? How's that, do you use fake snow, or how's that work?
Never leaves the Boston area, as you gotta believe.
So...
Hopefully, we can show you what we can do this winter.
So before you leave, I see a young lady with a baby over here. She moved right up front, so I'm assuming it's one of yours, right?
Yep, that's my wife.
Would you like...
Beautiful baby, Andrew.
Would you like to get a picture up here with your wife?
Absolutely.
And the plaque, and Mr. Sanchez and stuff, we'll get out of the way and get a picture for you guys. Thank you. Mike, if you have your wife and child out there?
I'm solo today. My father's already, yeah, that's it.
If not, your, your, your wife allowed this to happen, you're going out there with him?
If she could be that, she would.
Absolutely.
How old is your son? How old is the baby?
Seven months.
Mike, you want a picture with Papa?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay.
We actually had a second team that did pretty well in the competition as well, not as good as number one.
Do they want to go, do they want to go to Colorado, too?
Thanks, sir. A little better.
Nobody ever remembers who finishes second.
Boy, that room empty quick, huh? Yes, we're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, we made the difficult decision to discontinue the beeline service at the end, end of the upcoming fiscal year. The ridership numbers make it impossible to continue the service as we know it. We do recognize that for some, some residents that do use the beeline service, it is vital to them. To that end, the town has been exploring all options to come up with a system to meet the needs of those residents. This has included looking at options just, not just here in town, but also on a regional basis with some of our neighboring communities, Lexington and Bedford. I'd like to thank both Marge and John for their countless hours spent pursuing other options. I can't tell you how many different things they've looked into, and looked into thoroughly only to find out that they wouldn't work for us, or they were more expensive than the beeline, et cetera, et cetera. And at this time, they brought forward a program that they feel is worth trying out on a pilot basis while the beeline is still running, and I'll turn it over to Marge and John to, for an update on, on what, what we're gonna be doing.
Well, if I may first, just to, to introduce Marge, on, on, one of the things that we're pursuing is some grants, so maybe we'll start with that before we go into, into this pilot program. So, Marge?
So there was, the state had a, put out an RFP for grants for transportation, both capital and operating. So I have actually, somehow I've managed to be the one that got the, the short end of the straw on it, and I did apply for two grants, one for the COA specifically for a minivan for medical appointments, to get rid of the large van that only is driving one person back and forth. But the, what pertains to tonight is that we, the operating grant, and it's actually a federal grant that we have applied for that is, will pay for half of us, half of a year's worth of whatever we want to do, basically. So after much discussion, we decided to look at perhaps subsidizing rides on Uber, Lyft, taxis, and the such. A lot of other towns have started to do that, and it seems to be the way of the future. I think, you know, you've all gone to big concerts and ballgames, and, you know, there's Ubers or Lifts are picking people up left and right. It seems to be, you know, people don't want to take mass transit anymore, they want the convenience of going where they want to go and not when the state says you're going or the town says you're going. So that's what we've done, and it, the grant itself was accepted, and we're just waiting to hear what happens from there. In the meantime, we decided we need to do a pilot program to kind of work out the kinks before we get into a big grant that we have to answer to. So I will let John take it from there.
So with that, so what we did this year is we waited to see if we're gonna get the MBTA subsidy that the town receives every year. We get confirmation about June, July, August, and we did get confirmation that we're gonna get the grant for the current bus service that we have. So based on that, we calculated how much money we may have in that account for the beeline at the end of the fiscal year, and with, so it'll be an opportunity to take those funds and try this pilot program. Of course, we can't just use those funds, we're gonna have to get permission from the town meeting to actually do that, but that's what the idea came in of, is run a pilot concurrently with the bus service that will expire to the end of the fiscal year, but at least it gives us a chance to work out any details. Now, how, how the system will work, the subsidy will work, so the subsidy will be to provide financial assistance to elderly, disabled, and/or household income-eligible residents. So in other words, we're trying to help the people who we believe that Burlington Transit is helping today. And this program, the COA, will take care of the program as far as issuing checks, you know, subsidy for people who, who need transportation. The, Marge or her staff will have the ability to audit our residents if they believe that the funds are not being used for transportation. And, and the funds will be, at least for the grant program, will be only for six months, but sorry for the pilot, but in the future will be on a yearly basis. We believe that this program will actually, will work better for our residents. Using taxi, Lyft, Uber, or any of those systems will be a point-to-point transportation as opposed to what it is right now, and more to it, it will be on-demand. As we all know right now, unfortunately, our Burlington Transit runs very spread out looking in certain areas of town. It takes, sometimes if you miss the bus, you have to wait another hour for the bus to go by. This will allow residents to not only utilize the bus during the day, but actually any time that may be going to work, and maybe nights and weekends, which currently are not covered by our Burlington Transit system. So we think it's a, a better system. Obviously, we don't know all the details of it until we start running it as a pilot. And under the program, the town will offer up to like ten dollars per ride. We did a quick and dirty look at...
So the subsidy will be to provide financial assistance to elderly, disabled, and/or household income-eligible residents. So in other words, we're trying to help the people who we believe the Burlington Transit is helping today. And this program, the COA, will take care of the program as far as issuing checks, you know, subsidy for people who need transportation. The Marge or her staff will have the ability to audit our residents if they believe that the funds are not being used for transportation. And the funds will be, at least for the grand program, will be only for six months, but sorry, for the pilot, but in the future will be on a yearly basis. We believe that this program will actually will work better for our residents. Using Taxi, Lyft, Uber, or any of those systems will be a point-to-point transportation as opposed to what it is right now. And more to it, it will be on-demand. As we all know right now, unfortunately, our Burlington Transit runs very spread out, looking in certain areas of town. It takes, sometimes if you miss the bus, you have to wait another hour for the bus to go by. This will allow residents to not only utilize the bus during the day, but actually any time that they may be going to work, and maybe nights and weekends, which currently are not covered by our Burlington Transit system. So we think it's a better system. Obviously, we don't know all the details of it until we start running it as a pilot. And under the program, the town will offer up to like $10 per ride. We did a quick and dirty look to see how much Uber is during rush hour in town, and it runs about $10. So we figured that we may provide up to or close to 100% of the cost of that transport. As it is right now, every ride that we provide is costing us more than that. We're spending, I think, close to $14 a ride that we give right now. So this will give us an opportunity to actually, again, continue with the service to our residents, probably a better service than what they're receiving right now, and hopefully with no major increase in the budget. Although I have to say that carefully, because if you recall, for many years as we were running the Burlington Transit, we were utilizing a revolving fund, and we were not asking for a lot of money at town meeting. And every time we did that, we explained to town meeting that the reason we were only asking for a small amount is because we were running down our, you know, balance that we had on the Beeline. So going forward, the town will have the fund 50% if we get the grant or 100% of this program. So we did meet with the Burlington Transit Committee. We went over this a couple of weeks ago. There were a lot of questions that the group had, and we tried to answer all of them as far as what we could see. But they took a vote, and it was unanimous to support this type of program going forward as a replacement to our Burlington Transit. So with that, we're open to any questions.
Thank you. I have some questions that we're going to get to afterwards, but we'll start with Jimmy.
John, you said it's going to operate weekends, that's both Saturday and Sunday?
Well, right now, our Burlington Transit does not operate on weekends and holidays.
No, the pilot program?
The program, since it will provide rides as opposed to, it's not rides that they're going to schedule through us. It's rides that people will schedule themselves. So if somebody happened to work Tuesday through Saturday, and they do X number of rides a week, we'll subsidize those rides regardless of whether the ride is on a Saturday, Sunday, or a Monday.
So they're not limited by time of day or anything?
Nope.
And is this limited to just in-town or can they go out of town?
Well, again, we, the way the program is set up right now is to provide up to a certain amount of dollars. So if somebody works in Lowell, as an example, Marge is not going to chase that Uber to see whether Uber is going to drop him off. Obviously, that ride to Lowell will cost more than the $10, but the town will subsidize the first part of the ride.
So we're just providing the subsidy, and they go wherever they need to?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And the same for doctor's appointments. I know Manchester Hospital is a place people go to. So it'll work the same way, even though they live town.
Do we only pick up in Burlington? Or is it a Burlington resident who needs a ride back? Is that...
The way the program is configured is a subsidy per ride, so it doesn't matter where the ride originates from. If somebody, again, say that somebody was working in Woburn every day, and they need the subsidy from the town, so they're going to do two rides a day, back and forth. So we'll subsidize for the two rides regardless of where the ride will originate from.
Okay. And is there a maximum amount of rides a person can get a day?
Those are the things that we want to run the pilot for, because we're not certain of how...
We don't know what's going to come up while we're doing it, you know. You know, you would imagine it would be two rides to and from work, but we don't know for certain. So by doing the pilot, we'll be able to kind of weed out what we need for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess the only question I have at this immediate moment is, obviously, the half-statement. We're only subsidizing for residents, right? So as long as you're coming to or from, we don't, that's the way the program's going to kind of work. I think all my other questions are going to be from the data from the actual pilot program itself. I mean, I'm very curious to see what this is going to tell us. How long are we going to run the program for?
We anticipate in six months until June 30th of next year. And within a couple of months, though, probably within three months, because we have town meeting in May, we're going to have to, you know, formulate a decision. If this is the direction the town may go, we may just seek to get funded just because of timing. But the idea is to run this until June 30th.
Okay. I love having that question. It's amazing, I keep talking, questions keep coming up. How are we going to let residents know that this is a program that we're pilot testing?
Well, there's going to be two things. One of them is we need to make sure the town meeting will support the transfer of this fund for it to work. So assuming that that happens at town meeting, then we will publicize that in every media available, but particularly our bus, because that's what we are trying to replace. So in the same bus, information is provided there. And again, they probably seek in given numbers so they can talk to us, you know. But yeah, the bus is probably the best venue, because that's what we're replacing.
Great, thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm on that committee, and I sat in on the last meeting. This program, admitting the Beeline just wasn't working. We were looking for something more efficient. This is going to be a door-to-door service for Burlington residents, income-eligible residents, disabled and seniors. So I think in that six-month period, we'll be tweaking this program here and there. I think that, if I'm not mistaken, was the grant for 75, and we're going to come up with the other 75, right?
Correct.
For total of 150 for our budget. Okay. This type of transportation system is based on a model Marge told us called Go-Go Granny, which we thought was kind of cute in some other parts of the country or something, for the seniors, they use this door-to-door service. So we're kind of excited to see how it works. I think it'll, obviously, you know, our ridership had been dwindling. This type of service may see an increase in ridership. We certainly hope so. We'll have to see where it goes.
Thank you, Mike.
Just a couple of quick things ahead. How are we going to go about the income verification of a family? How does that part of it work?
We have to do that now.
Do that now?
With the property tax work-off program. So we'll do it the same way. We'll ask for their tax forms.
And I'm sure there's a million questions that have already been asked, so I'm going to hold off on, I got probably 3 million over here. I'll get to you in a second. I see, yeah, I don't know if you're waving to me or you want to talk. I was assuming you wanted to talk. I was assuming that, but yeah, I'll get there. So, yeah, there's a bunch of questions, and I'm really, really interested to see how this works, because, you know, we've talked about it before about the Beeline, and I'm like, nope, 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 got to keep it, got to keep it. And now I completely understand the conversation we've had about it. No one's riding it. I mean, it's costing us X amount, and we're just not making it now. So I understand why we went to this program. I'm very much interested to see how it's going to work out, right? I mean, I'm glad, Michael, you're on the committee. I'm really glad to see how it's going to work out. My other questions I'll hold off to later on. But yes, would you like to get up, Millie, and say that you're totally in favor of this and think it's a great idea?
I know you're always so happy when you see me coming.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm here both as someone who has been on the Beeline Committee for probably 30 years, longer than some of the people in the room have been alive. But I'm also here as a town meeting member and... Enough out of you. I'm also here as someone who can picture myself needing a way to get around when I can no longer ride a bicycle. But I was part of the meeting, and I concurred with the vote. But I did have a caveat, which I think should be brought up because I think it involves a larger issue. And that is that the Uber, Lyft solution isn't a mass public transportation solution to the problem. And when we have a planning board meeting this week on enlarging the parking lot at the Human Services, I keep thinking, when I can no longer walk or take my bike up to the Human Services, I would be someone who would love to have public transportation. Now, I admit that the program that we talked about at this meeting is better than what we have now. But as my father would say, that's damning with faint praise, because if it isn't a program that is going to be available for people like me who would be driving a car up to the senior center because I don't qualify to use an Uber, that would be a problem. It helps the people who need a vehicle. But one of the things that troubles me is that an Uber can only take one person. And I don't know if you saw the email from someone else, a longtime member of the committee, Jen Salinas, who emailed saying that she has heard that the Ubers are circling the town, because I think we had 600,000 rides last year, and they're causing part of the traffic problem. So I am not quite sure that this is going to be the ideal program. And I worry about getting rid of a program and not having any public transportation, but just that for people in need. And just to give you a little bit of perspective that I hope town meeting and that you and the whole town will think about is that we recently had a new school bus contract, which was $250,000 less than the program we had voted in at town meeting. We've only given the Beeline $40,000 a year for the last few years, which comes to, I think, pennies on the tax rate. But we give the athletic programs at the school and the buses free of charge, which I totally like. It makes us a town that takes care of its own. But what I worry about is that our own aren't necessarily going to be well taken care of by this plan because it isn't really going to reduce the number of parking places needed. It isn't going to reduce the number of cars. And it isn't going to let people like me, who would not qualify for this program if I ever had to, you know, have another way to get about. I don't think it would work. I think that perhaps, and I say this not knowing exactly how we could manage it, but I think we should be reporting to town meeting in January and perhaps thinking, is there some way that will work even better than this? I am glad to see we're caring about the people who absolutely need it, but I think we have a bigger public transportation issue. And if you get rid of the Beeline, instead of seeing if you can make it work, I've talked to people at Lexpress, and they're going through good times and bad times. But when you totally get rid of a system, it's almost impossible to put it back. And so I'm just urging a note of caution, and perhaps that we should be reporting to town meeting in January so that we aren't blindsided in May by having nothing really that works, and the Beeline is gone. That's my concern, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you. Any comment?
Yeah, a couple of clarifications, because I think it's important to note. And I just heard Millie saying that Lexpress have experienced ups and downs. And the reason we actually went with them in Bedford is because all of us are experiencing just downs. Lexington, Bedford, as well as Burlington, all they have seen is tremendous decline in the ridership. That's what got us into joining together to see if we could find a better system. So unfortunately, nobody's experienced up, only downs. If we were still having the same amount of ridership that we had, I don't think we would be sitting here tonight. And the issue is, is regional, it's not just us. I mean, for, could be people who tend to drive the bus or whatever. We don't know what the real answer to it is, other than we know that ridership is going down. So, and as far as town meeting, we did report at town meeting, the May town meeting, that this FY '20 will be the last year that we will ask for funding for the Burlington Transit as we knew it. For the last three town meetings, we've been saying that this is where we were heading. And we reported loud and clear that this is going to be the last year of the Burlington Transit as we know it. So the report has already been made, and I think it was clear at town meeting. There was a lot of talk about that in town meeting, as a matter of fact. So I just wanted to just make those two comments for not only us, but for the people at home who may be watching. I mean, we have been working on this for about three years now.
Okay, thank you. So just a quick note, just a very quick question. Millie, you did sit on the committee, you said? Did you sit on this committee?
I was at this meeting, right. And both Jen and I voted for it.
Okay, that's all I need to know. That's good, thank you. So some of the things that she said, I'm sure you brought up at the meeting. I don't want to have another meeting on it right now, but just some of the things that she said, I'm sure you looked into. Just could you look into them again, make sure that you guys are on the same page? I think this program is going to work, but it's, it's going into the future. We don't know how it's going to work. We don't know if it's going to be the right thing or the wrong thing for the town. But I'm sure with the group of people that's involved in this committee, I think that's a great start. I think that, like I said, there's a million questions to ask. So we could just go from there, and I think it's going to work out great. So are we looking for an approval tonight? Is that what we're looking for?
I think this is an update, Mr. Chairman. But I just wanted everybody to know, I can't thank these two enough. They've literally turned over every rock in trying to figure out a way to come up with a system that will work for us. Again, working with other towns, trying to combine our systems. Many of the options just aren't feasible, given the ridership right now. And again, they've spent numerous hours just researching these opportunities, and we really feel like this one at least has an opportunity as to be something that may work for us to help out.
Great, great.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, also the presentation we have tonight or comments on updates we have tonight, it also goes back to one town meeting warrant article that you'll be seeing for the upcoming town meeting, which is to allow us to use those funds. That we currently have as a revolving account to fund this pilot program. So it's pretty much the same backup, the same information that we talked about tonight.
Great, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Marge. Yeah, I wouldn't go too far, either one of you, for the next one. It's time to make your money. Let's go.
Mr. Chairman, I realize we have someone here for a block party, so...
Oh, you want it?
Can we bring them up first?
Absolutely.
If you don't mind.
All right, you can move. We're going to bring the block party up. Absolutely. College Road. You could just state your name and...
Yes, my name is Megan Worsham, and I live at 7 College Road. So I'm here for the block party.
Okay. Here for the block party.
Yes.
Is this one we've done before? This is the block party we've done? Yes, it is.
Yes, we're quite experienced in this now.
You getting good at it?
Pretty good, yeah, I'd say so.
And Mr. Hawley would say we'll all be over for a burger later?
Burger, all our cold beverages.
48, nice you got it right in, yeah.
Gentlemen, would you like to speak on this? Anybody?
I have no problem. You guys have been doing this, and it's been great. And I just want to confirm, did we get any feedback? Making sure that the police have been contacted and we're all sit there. Okay. And you guys know to contact them about the traffic and...
Yeah.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Just a quick question. Do you have a rain date? Because if so, we need to approve the rain date along.
Yeah, the rain date would be the 8th, it would be the next day.
It would be the Sunday. Michael?
I just love that the reason for the event is fun. That's the motivation point.
It's celebration once a year.
Honestly, I mean, it's great that, you know, you guys can come together as residents of the area and just have a block party. I think that's wonderful. So, yeah. All the power to you.
We accidentally get some residents from Liberty who make their way over too. It's also not a bad thing.
It's a long walk from Winona, but I think I could drive there.
I was going to say, I love, I'm proud of you, I might walk over.
Jimmy's right. I'm trying out the new Uber ride.
There you go.
Okay, do I call anything? Nothing?
I just want to say, apologize. Next year, tell Betty we owe you at the top of the agenda next year, so you don't have to sit through all that stuff, so.
It was good to see some recognition from the town, so absolutely no problem with that whatsoever. So thank you, Francis.
And I'll probably apologize too, because you're making me feel better. I'm so far behind schedule right now.
Scared you not to come at 6 for that reason. I think it was okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve item number 165, approval for a block party, College Road, on September 7th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. with a rain date of September, I'm sorry, September 7th, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. with a rain date of September 8th, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
Jim, second, I think. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose against 5-0-0, Betty. In favor?
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Sorry, I'm not mistaken.
I'll see you around 5:00.
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, back to item number, back to number, item number 164. Human Services Building Parking Lot.
Inside the map. Did you stay in the lines? Did you stay in the lines? Nice job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back in June, we had an onsite meeting at 61 Center Street to walk the parking lot. It was a large group, including several selectmen, members of the planning board, staff members, stakeholders from the building, and even a few residents, like Mrs. Nash. The main subject for the discussion was a difficult task of balancing out the need for parking at that facility while maintaining as much green space as possible. It was a very positive gathering, and many great suggestions were made and considered. Tom Hayes and Tim Mazone from Engineering have put together a new plan based upon all the feedback that we received, and we're looking for approval, this plan by the Board of Selectmen before we bring it to the Planning Board at one of their future meetings. So, Tom, John, Marge.
Sure. I'll give you the quick history and then some highlights of the design here. So this, this parking lot evaluation goes back, I always sat on a committee in 2005, and I believe Marge was with me, and we evaluated all sorts of options. And ultimately, what came out of it was we did a small expansion on the south side of the building, which is the right side, as you're looking at the drawing. But there's been a need, and with the Grand View Farm going online, there was even more of a need of parking out there. So something that we've continuously been looking at, and with the redevelopment of the building, it was time, again, to start looking at this, looking at the expansion of the park. And so we'd gone to the Planning Board with a concept, probably, I don't know, maybe a year, eighteen months ago, with a much bigger, much bigger proposal. We wanted to take pretty much the entire green space in front of the building, put two banks of parking instead of one, as this drawing depicts. A lot of pushback, a lot of pushback because of the loss of green space. So as Paul said, we got together with the different departments, the folks that are in the building, and came up with something that we felt would work for everyone. So what we did was essentially, we cut this design in half. So instead of two banks of parking, now we have a single bank. So we went from, say, 54 spaces to about 23. The beauty of this design, it's modular. So like I said, we cut it in half. So in the future, if there is a need, we can always go back and build that second bank of parking. So the highlights of this design would be, as you know, the building has a horseshoe driveway now, entrance in, entrance out, can get a little bit confusing as people driving around. So we have a single entrance, one lane in, two lanes out. Let's see, the back of the parking lot, there were some safety improvements that folks who are there would like, some small islands, some removal of pavement. And then we're putting a sidewalk in front of the building, concrete granite sidewalk, as well as down the entryway coming in and tying into the existing concrete sidewalks in front. Pretty much.
Yeah, the only thing I will add is that I know that handicap parking has been an issue at this facility. So we met with Chris Hanifin, Tom and I met to go over the number of spaces that we have, the number of spaces that are needed. And the current number of spaces that we have for the facility more than exceed the required in-use spaces that we typically see at the facility. So the new section that you see here in black will not have any spaces designated for handicap accessibility, because that will create other issues when it comes to the design and the grading and things like that, that will put us probably, you know, outside of compliance. So, and for safety reasons, again, we are keeping the parking spaces, as you're looking at this building right now, to the right and to the left as they are right now. And I think we counted them, but I don't remember the number you have.
We have 14 existing HP spaces, which is almost double what we need for the facility.
What's on the handicap?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question on the handicap. There seems to be a gap, there's two spaces, then a gap, then a third space. Is that intentional? Is it needed to be there?
Yes, there is, and I'm not sure if this is exactly how it is, but there was an aisle there because it's for van accessibility. So the gap that you see is actually, the field is actually hashed.
Okay.
It's not.
So that's not a space then?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Are you guys all set with your, with everything? I have a quick question. The back of the parking lot, the night we were there, we discussed the looking out onto the field, the right, the left-hand corner, they were talking about putting, I don't know what it was there, but is that?
A little bump off that some of the members thought we might be able to pave to gain some extra spots.
Is that in the picture?
We looked at that, and that really isn't, it would net maybe one extra spot for the other additional work, and kind of make a quirky aisle configuration. So, but some of the good, other good ideas came out of that meeting.
Yes, yeah.
One of them might as well.
It was an overall good meeting. There's only a question I had.
Was there one around the back where we narrowed that a little bit, provided some additional green space?
For, there's a lot of safety concerns going around the building. So we were going to build some islands, as well as reduce the lane width, or the aisle width. And it works to our benefit, because if we reduce the amount of pavement, we reduce the impervious area, we can reduce our drainage system. The drainage system that was proposed originally would probably cost $150,000 to build. So by washing that, by putting more green space and less asphalt, we can reduce that, if not eliminate it. So that's a huge benefit, a huge idea that came out of that meeting.
Okay. I'm going to go to board members, and then I'll go out. Who wants to start?
Having spent a fair amount of time in that building, is, okay, we're looking at the building from Center Street.
Correct.
Is all the traffic going to have to go up and around and come out? Or is the traffic on the left side of the building, are those people going to be able to just filter to the driveway?
The folks on the left-hand side, so there's a, as you pull into 61 Center, there's a parking field off the left-hand side of the building. Folks can come in and out from that, from that area, as well as from the back. The folks who park on the right-hand side or in the front, they have to go all the way around the building, because that's all angle parking. So once you're in, going all the way around the building, it's kind of a one-way.
And if I also may, looking at this picture, there's a handicap spot on the other side of the roadway. Didn't we take some handicap spots out of there because they're going to cross the traffic?
And I just made a note to actually tell Tom this tomorrow, so we can correct that, because what we have is only the bus at the corner and no more handicap spaces on the right. You're correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Jimmy, you're all set? Mike?
All set.
All set.
So, Tom, just to clarify, so you can go both ways, all the way up until the, this, the back corner up over here?
Right. So if you go to the field, two-way, but once you're around the building, then you're into the one-way.
You're into the one-way?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, awesome. And you said you're going to do the island up back for the rec area?
Yeah, they were concerned about folks cutting the corner, so we're going to build a little aisle in there, as well as do some some pavement in the back as well.
Excellent.
Great. That's it from the board. Millie?
I just wanted to clarify that the handicap part wasn't accurate, but I do think.
Right, okay, thank you. Gentlemen, Paul, anything?
I don't have anything additional, Mr. Chairman.
So at this point, we're probably looking for an approval. To send this off to our Planning Board?
Yes.
So do I have a?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve item number 164, the street parking lot plan, for the Human Services Building, 61 Center Street, as presented to us tonight.
Motion by Jim, second by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Quo's against, five zero zero, Betty. Great job, guys.
Thank you very much.
Long time coming. Marge, are you happy with it?
Yes.
Okay, good. Because you're there every day.
I am.
You're there every single day, when my rain has shined. Uber, no Uber, doesn't matter.
I just want to thank Tom too, because you've probably rewritten this thing more times.
Well, those HP sprouts keep on moving.
Well, did you see how good he's, he's getting really good at this? He's coloring now.
I just want to thank you for the time.
Great job, Tom.
It's very, Bobby took you a lot of time.
Well, I have people who do that.
All righty.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Where are we?
166.
Item number 166. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item is a housekeeping issue. Back in 2009, town meeting voted to authorize the town to obtain these easements in conjunction with the roadway improvements that were done on South Avenue and Middlesex Turnpike. That was all done as part of the Mass Works Grant when Curry came in. The property owner recently contacted the town to tell us that we're trying to record these easements, and a selectman's vote was needed to accept them. This was all reviewed by Engineering and Town Council. So essentially, the property owners provided us with an easement to improve the roadway, and a board vote is needed for them to properly record their plan. So that's what we're looking for here tonight.
Awesome.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. And the list that we have presented have been checked and confirmed, and what we're voting on is the list as we see it?
Yes, that was part of the Mass Works Grant on the, I believe it was the Gutierrez expansion for the Curry. In order to expand the, expand the roadway, we had to have the permanent easement in place.
Right, but I just wanted to make sure, this is the list that we're voting on as it was presented to us, so.
Yes, I'm.
In the backup, yep.
Yeah. Thank you.
Town Council reviewed it as well.
Anybody? Nick? Mike?
No, sir.
Jim?
Good.
Okay, so we're looking for.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's a motion with this one.
Yes.
Maybe Selectmen Priest can read that into the record.
Yes, absolutely.
Sure. So I made the motion that the Board of Selectmen accept an easement from the Gutierrez Company over its land as shown on the concept plan entitled "South Avenue Plan Development District Concept Plan," dated July 31, 2007, for purposes of the widening of Second Avenue and installation of sidewalks pursuant to the vote of Article III of the September 30 of 2009 Town Meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion by Nick, second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Quo's against, five zero zero, Betty.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
You guys can go home now. Sir?
Item number 167, remote access for town boards. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Selectmen Priest has brought forward an initiative for the board to consider regarding the rules for potential remote participation for town boards and committees. Within your packet, we have provided a potential policy for the board to consider, as well as a Town Council memo further outlining some of the finer points of the state statute. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Nick to present the details.
Thank you. So I guess this has been brought up historically in the past before, and it was brought up, brought to my attention by, actually, the members of the ISAC, knowing the ISAC committee.
Oh, ISAC, I'm sorry, yep.
That, you know, they, you know, were wondering if it was a possibility. So we thought we'd bring it back in front of everybody. Town Council looked at it and made some suggestions, and so I'm just going to take a moment to kind of cover the highlights for everybody, and then we can kind of go from there. So this remote access policy, you know, we've kind of entered into this era of flexible communication. It's no longer about just cell phone use. I think, you know, whenever you walk into a company now, they've got, you know, if it's not built into the walls, it's, you know, video conferencing and teleconferencing and, you know, really, as long as you have a signal, you can communicate anywhere on the planet, which is making it very interesting for office buildings, because people are now working much more remotely. But this policy covers its basis in terms of its concern for misuse, or even, you know, people saying, well, we don't want to go to a physical meeting, let's just all hop on the phone together. In Section 3, it sets forth a minimum requirements that must be met for remote access to even be considered. And those are that members of the town board who participate remotely and all persons present at the meeting location must be clearly audible to each other, a quorum of the town board, including the chair or a person authorized to chair the meeting, must be physically present at the meeting location, and three members who participate remotely may vote and shall not be deemed absent. And I believe it says further down that all votes must be done via a roll call vote, so there's no misinterpretation over said technological communications. There are several permissible reasons why remote access would be needed. Those are as follows. So personal illness, personal disability, an emergency, military service, and geographical distance, which I find very interesting, you know, you can kind of really, you know, if something happens, you can still participate if a vote necessitates it. This policy also did a good job covering logistical questions around what technologies are permissible, as well as procedure. We cannot select which boards get this, this is just an overarching policy. So it's not like we could say ISAC can go ahead and do this, and all other boards will still carry on as follows. This will just kind of cover everybody, you know, and it's about who chooses to utilize it. We're not mandating anything. It's just an offering, really, that we'd be saying, you know, if for some reason, one of these reasons, you cannot attend a meeting, there's some flexibility there. This policy has been drafted in accordance with our Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, which is obviously very important. And then just in my own personal belief, you know, the adoption of this policy would allow boards who choose to use the flexibility, should it be needed, to continue conducting business as usual in certain circumstances. I'll be the first person to attest to having been on many a conference, and all the nuanced issues that can kind of come up with those, that may make a meeting take five or 10 minutes longer than necessary, whether it be, you know, repeating something, or, you know, not really being able to, you know, feel the person as they're having the conversation, and, you know, Bob and I, we're making direct eye contact right now. Unless we were doing a video conference, which is permissible, you know, according to the policy, you know, there's something lost in the, you know, reading of facial expressions. But that being said, at the end of the day, I encourage all boards and committees to meet in person in accordance with open meeting law. I think that this policy would just be a good to have. So we bring it before the Board of Selectmen for consideration.
Right, thank you very much. That was awesome.
Mr. Chairman.
Before we get going.
Okay.
She's in the audience, I got a couple of questions for her, so if she won't ask us, we'll go through our stuff first, and then just to make sure in case there's a question, she can answer for us, you know, legally and stuff like that. So go ahead, Mr. Holling. I just want to recognize that she is here, Amy's here, and there might be some questions for her.
Just as background, there has, there is one group of people who have been allowed to do this already, and that is Commissions on Disability. Back in 2015, the state had decided that this is a group of people who, if they had to use the remote meetings, could do so. And having been part of that, it works well. It is something that is valuable. You do have to monitor yourself to make sure you don't abuse it. There has to be checks and balances in making sure that people are at the meeting, in the room, for the eye contact. But if there are circumstances that arise, and obviously, a commission on disability, there are people who may not be able to make meetings. And again, Amy had been quite instrumental in helping with the kind of phone system, and we've got several in town that we can use, that everybody can hear, and the communication is there. So I would support this wholeheartedly.
Yes, go ahead.
Just a quick question. Would this be applicable to town meeting?
No, because town meeting is not a recognized board committee in that sense.
Okay. That roll call vote would have been a nightmare. Just under number six, the letter H, you may want to just take a look at that first word, it needs a little tweaking.
Okay.
That's it.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm kind of a dinosaur. I get it. I know people working, moving, doing business at the speed of sound today. But I'll tell you what, if I were someone who follows local politics on BCAT, I would not appreciate looking, listening to a box on the table. And not only that, when I'm doing business as a selectman, I'd like to have that eye contact that you referred to earlier. Like I said, I know, just old-fashioned, but that's my take on it. I can, I see potential issues with allowing this. I can see potential misuse. In some cases, people just find it easier to attend a meeting from the comfort of their sofa. I believe it's not that much of an effort to attend these meetings. So I would be opposed to it for those reasons.
Amy, could you show up for a quick second here? So I'm personally stuck between a rock and a hard place with this one. I definitely like the idea and technology moving forward, and I definitely, in old school, like Michael. So how do we go about not abusing this? Where it becomes a thing where like, I don't feel like going tonight, I'll just sit on the couch. Let's, you know, part of, how do we do this?
Well, I think a couple of the things is, if you look at the permissible reasons for remote participation, thank you, I'm thinking about rain, is there isn't the excuse of, I didn't feel like making it to the meeting tonight.
Yeah, there is. A, personal illness, I don't feel good.
Well, personal illness is not, I don't feel like making it to the meeting tonight.
So that's pluralistic, and A's a good one for that.
I think that what happens, what can happen, and talking to other clerks, what happens is that there have been cases where, you know, you have that perpetual person who just says, oh, I don't feel like making it to the meeting tonight. And the peer pressure has basically then said, the committee itself has said, well, that's not a reasonable excuse. And so that, that has kind of, at least in the instances that I'm aware of, has kind of eliminated that. That person has either gotten off the board or said, oh, okay, I'll make it. It really, I think one of the things, not so much with this board, because most of you work and live in, well, you all live in town, but most of you work in town here, is that for the boards that we're trying to pull in a more diverse group of people. And so people who maybe don't have the flexibility to say, I can make every meeting, because my boss might call me tomorrow and say, you gotta be on a plane tomorrow morning. So that's what I look at. That's what is under kind of the emergency, you know. Hey, I gotta call a client in Texas is having a meltdown, and I gotta be there. That's the kind of thing that most people have told me, that's when it's being used. So I guess I, you know, that's what I look at, that in this day and age, more people are kind of used to working remotely. But if they're involved with town politics, they also do realize that it's not something I can fall back on all the time and just say, oh, jeez, I didn't feel like, it was a nice day, I decided to go fishing instead of coming in for the meeting.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, absolutely.
Amy raises a great point. When it comes to abuse, when you offer something, whether it be, you know, this, you know, in the private sector, people can work from home, you know, things like unlimited sick time, the people who abuse it, whether it be because they're being lazy or what have you, the peer pressure alone is enough to weed those kind of folks out. Plus, I think what's nice about this policy is that we have to have physical quorum. So it's not like, you know, three people could be at home if it's a five-member board, right? You have to have people in the room. So if the majority of the board's showing up, and one person's perpetually, you know, I'll dial in. Look, you know.
So you're saying the quorum has to be in the room?
Oh, yes.
A physical.
A physical quorum.
It can't be out there someplace else.
No.
Okay.
Correct. Physical meetings.
In this board's case, you know, you'd have, three of you would have to be in the room, and the person who is chair or vice chair has to be in the room.
Okay.
So the chair, unfortunately, Joe, you don't get off.
You wouldn't be able to take it off, Joe.
You couldn't run the meeting from remotely. You have to physically be in the room. And so that, that's also continues to have that consistency. Yeah.
Well, go ahead, Jim.
I just had two quick questions. Actually, it's actually one question. With respect to the meeting minutes, would the minutes reflect who's present, who's remoting in, and who's not present?
Great question, yes.
That's correct.
All right. So that would be reflected, so you could actually see someone who's a repeat non-attendee or repeat remote. And I think, to the point of peer pressure, I think if every meeting requires a roll call, the other members are gonna, you know, be upset that every vote at every meeting is now a roll call because of remoting in, and that peer pressure will kick in. So I'm old-fashioned too, but I can also see where the world is heading, so it's.
So what's the difference when this is a conference call? We all got on a conference call.
I guess the big difference is, in a, just a general conference call, we could all be anywhere.
Because they did that one time in a town meeting, one of the guys couldn't make town meeting, and he sat on the phone, they were down in the lunch area, he sat on the phone, and he was talking the whole time. Don't shake your head, I was sitting there watching the whole thing. Whether legal or not, I don't know, but that's what they were doing. And he was barking in, and he voted at that point. So with a, with a.
The Landry's Committee.
Landry's Committee, yeah. So I don't know, I mean, so.
Well, with the current open meeting laws, I can't tell you when that happened or whatever, but with the.
Two, two, two town meetings ago. Absolutely.
I was there too, so it did happen.
Okay, I was not aware of that, but that's not how a town meeting runs. You can't take a vote at town meeting from someone who is not physically present.
It wasn't at so-called town meeting. It was a, it was a meeting prior to town meeting.
That particular instance I'm aware of, and it has been addressed.
Okay. So what's the, what's the?
That, basically, you, that, because you all had not approved remote access, that was an illegal meeting.
Okay.
And I believe the moderator brought up the fact to the chair of that committee that the votes he was just talking about were not allowed.
Okay. So on another note, Paul, give me your intake on this, please.
I'm neutral on this. I think that the opinions.
Well, you can be Switzerland, but come up with something.
The opinion of the board, I think, reflects the debate that goes on in every community. I think you got some folks that see it as a good convenience for busy folks that are trying to contribute to their community, and I think that there's a lot of folks that also feel, like Mike does, that you lose something when you're talking to a black box instead of conversating with a person. So I think the opinions that you guys have shown here tonight, I think, is the opinions that, in the debate that would go on in any community regarding this topic, so.
Chairman, I have another question. We'll give you a chance.
Yes, go ahead.
Can this be, oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can this be run for a time certain, or does it have to be in perpetuity after this?
You guys can revoke it at any time with a future majority vote, so.
Can we, is it possible to, if this gets approved, I don't want to say condition it, but.
Trial basis?
Condition it so that we have to reconvene it around a year from now to see if it's working, or what?
Yeah.
I don't see why not.
I agree. That would just be in your motion.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Would you, and I don't know who, but I imagine you would be the keeper of the information. Would you pass on to the boards what they can and can't do, and should or shouldn't do, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this, this policy, sorry, Amy, this policy covers all procedures, everything about taking minutes properly. It really breaks down, step by step, what the boards need to be doing, so that open meeting law is being followed, so that we're tracking everything. It even states at one point that if somebody dials in via video conference, everyone in the physical room needs to be able to see that person, right? So I couldn't just have Bob up on my, I'm sorry, Bob up on my laptop over here. He'd have to be projected somewhere where everyone physically present could see him, if that were the case. If it were a phone call, obviously, we wouldn't be able to see him.
And from our standpoint, from my office's standpoint, you know, we do get all the minutes. We do have to chase some boards for their minutes, but that's certainly something that would also be reviewed in terms of, like, if they did take a vote and they had remote access, do they have a roll call vote included in there? So, you know, it's just one of the problem, or one of the parts of dealing with remote access.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything else?
I'll make a motion when there's no other discussion.
White open for you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 167, remote access for town boards, with the condition that the town clerk report back to us in September of 2020, it's about a year out, to evaluate or re, to evaluate the process, evaluate it, see how it's going.
Mr. Chairman, I think town council provided us with a vote in the packet, and that you could modify to certain whatever.
Sorry. I'll make a motion that the board of selectmen authorize remote participation pursuant to the requirements of General Law Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 26 and 940 of the Code Massachusetts Regulations 29.10, for all future meetings of multi-member parties in the town of Burlington, and further that the board of selectmen remote participation policy dated August 12, 2019, be hereby adopted with the condition that the town clerk report back to the board of selectmen in September 2020 for assessment of the policy.
Second.
That sounds.
You want to start with that one? So motion by Jim, second by Nick. One discussion point. Is this for every board in town? That's, this is for all the boards, like, or just selectmen planning board?
Any board that's subject to the open meeting law, I believe, so.
Any board or committee that's subject to open meeting.
So just about every single board. Okay. With that condition, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go for it, but other than that, I would have said no, because I'm old. So go ahead. What was I, motion seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close.
Aye.
Stay. So four, zero, one.
Four, one, zero.
One, zero. Sorry. Because of the condition.
Thank you.
Try it for you. We'll try anything, see how it works out.
Well, if I can just, I do appreciate Nick being interested in taking this up, because we, it does come up, and I get asked it, you know, often, off and on, and so it's good to give it a try and, and see, moving forward, what happens. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thank you for being here. Answered a lot of questions. 168.
Now, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next agenda item is a disclosure of a potential financial interest in a contract by Youth and Family Services volunteer board member, Dave Cullen, security consultant, who has worked with the Burlington Police and Burlington Public Schools to design and install security upgrades at our school system. As part of the final renovations for 33 Center Street, we are pursuing similar security upgrades to that facility. As a volunteer board member at Youth and Family Services, Mr. Cullen is technically your employee, and he would be prohibited from participating in this process, as he may have a potential financial interest in a resulting contract to perform the work. We recognize this potential conflict in advance, and we were able to discuss it with town council prior to beginning the process. Town council has determined that Mr. Cullen could continue as a volunteer board member and participate in the project with the board's approval of this conflict of interest, financial interest form, which discloses his potential financial interest in the security upgrades project, so.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Saying there may not, do I have a motion?
I'll do it, please.
Motion by Mike, second by.
Second.
Jimmy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close against?
I'm staying.
Oh, stay. One abstention. Thank you, Betty.
I'll write that one down.
Yeah, boy. 169.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the appointment of Mike Patterson to interim chief earlier this evening, we will now begin the process of interviewing potential internal candidates from within the department for the fire chief's position. With Chief Yetman's retirement and the implementation of the ALS program, we will have some significant promotional opportunities within the department in the near term. In our discussions with the union leadership on the previous contract, they expressed a desire to increase professional development opportunities within the department to prepare our future generational leaders. This interview process for fire chief is an important first step in that initiative. It has been customary in the past to review candidates at a captain level or above for chief, and we believe that that makes sense at this time around as well. I would like to request a selectman to participate with us in the interview process, along with myself, Joanne Faust from HR, Chief Kent. We'll ask the union for a representative, and we will reach out to a chief from a neighboring community to participate on the interview with us, and if they're able to spare the time. There's really, if you count it up, there's only about seven potential candidates under this system, and we're really, quite frankly, unsure how many may be willing to participate in the interview process. But we do think it's a very worthwhile initiative to get firefighters thinking about their futures, and whether they wish to become part of the leadership team, and all those good things that come from that. I can honestly say, having participated in the police promotional interviews through two rounds from now, I can tell you guys that the improvement on the candidates from interview one to interview two is amazing. So folks come in for an interview, they quickly determine where their weaknesses are, where their strengths are, and we can see it when they come back, that they've gone back and worked really hard to fill in the holes, that they were made aware of their first time through the interview. So I can tell you that it's remarkable, and almost every candidate, when they come back second time around for a promotional interview, has made a dramatic improvement in both their resume, in their skill set, in their leadership ability, and their ability to express themselves in terms of what we're looking for for the department. So we'd like to start to implement such similar type system in the, in the fire department, just so that we can, again, start to train our future, future group of leaders over there. So we will be, you know, looking for a selectman to participate on this.
Thank you, Paul. I would love to sit on the committee, if anybody.
Well, no, I was, I'm the vice chair, but I'm in the subcommittee.
If you want.
But if the chairman wants to sit on that, I'll defer to him.
That's right, you should probably sit.
I'm the subcommittee to the fire department.
I just figured we're a copy, wouldn't want to talk to all the guys over there.
I'm fear and impartial, been doing so for 30-plus years, so.
All right. All right, I'll let you do it. No more kidding. Good luck. All right. So that's just discussion, right? There's no.
Correct.
So we're gonna move on to, you guys have anything to say about it before I move on? Anybody? Nothing? Okay. We'll go to 170, Paul. Was that straight?
Mr. Chairman, 170 is a petition from a citizen to install pedestrian signal.
And he's aware of it.
So just so the board is aware that the Traffic Advisory Committee, STACK Committee, had reviewed this request in 2017, and determined that this location did not meet the specifications for a pedestrian walking signal. I'm wondering if maybe we can defer this to a future meeting, so we can hear from the residents on this.
Correct.
But this is an area where we've been asked to look at before, and again, I don't think it would be fair for us to discuss it now without the resident here to make their case to the board, so.
Absolutely.
Perhaps we can put that off to a future meeting.
For both. 171.
171, housing application, 160 Cambridge Street. Mr. Chairman, this agenda item is for the board approval for the application to the state for the two affordable housing units for the project at 160 Cambridge Street. The planned petition to state to include two units in our official affordable housing inventory. The town received a payment of $195,750 for the share of the .9 unit generated by the project as negotiated by the planning board. So this is just an application package that we need to submit to the state to get them to include those two units in our affordable housing inventory.
Excellent. We need approval on this, right?
Yes.
Gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve item number 171, the LAU housing application for 160 Cambridge Street as presented.
Okay, this is motion, and is there a second?
Second.
No, okay. And now is the discussion beforehand. Michael?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it was having such a good meeting up until we got to this agenda item. Under the zoning agreement, we have 10% of any multifamily housing unit is supposed to be designated as affordable. This is 29 units. I think any reasonable person would assume 10% of 29, we round up to three. I'm disappointed. I think that's kind of an understatement, that we only. I think that's kind of an understatement, that we only get two and some cash for these. And I want to thank Jim Dougherty for the amount of time he spent negotiating on behalf of the town, trying to get the best deal he could for this town, and was ultimately edged out of these negotiations, so... But Jim Dougherty is, you know, our, for those who aren't sure, Jim, he's our part-time housing, affordable housing administrator here in town. Supposed to be small, part-time position, he gets a small stipend for doing it. It has morphed into something much, much more than what we tasked him with a few years ago, but I just can't thank Jim enough for, not only on this, but every other affordable opportunity that he's been involved with, and he's always, always looking out for the best interest of the community. So I want to thank Jim very much. Having said that, this is the done deal. I'm disappointed, but there's nothing we can do about it at this point. I'll, we'll just have to take the two. I'm not gonna try and hold up this agenda item, but I just wanted to share some of my thoughts on this and hope, and hope that these ambiguities in our zoning and permitting process are addressed on the next, the next time we see an application like this. Don't want any gray areas. I want to know definitively how many units the developer is designating to the town and not wait till after the thing's built and negotiated. Very disappointing. Thank you for allowing me to say my piece on that.
Absolutely, Michael. It couldn't be any more spot on. So it was motion by Jim, second by Bob. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained. Five, zero, zero, Betty. 172.
Mr. Chairman, 172 is just a listing of warrant articles that have been submitted for the September town meeting, and Betty, I believe, we're looking for a vote for the board to add these on to the warrant?
Yes, sir. What we need to do tonight is just approve this list of articles, so that we can get the, that added into the printer, the warrant that's gonna be printed.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
And will we have a meeting where we discuss these before town meeting?
Absolutely, you will. This is just the beginning process of it. We just got them Friday, so now you look at it and you disagree, and you look at it, so you know what's gonna be happening.
Thank you, Betty. So this is an approval?
Yes.
Lost track, I'm sorry. I apologize. So do we have a motion on this?
I'll make the motion that we approve as written.
There's motion by Bob, second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Stayed. Five, zero, zero, Betty. The lecturer, excuse me, I have to leave. Thank everybody for tonight. Jimmy? Now the boss.
Good luck, Joe.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Okay, next item on the agenda is 173, approval of minutes for April 18th executive session and July 15th regular session. Eddie just stepped out, so I...
One question, if I may, before we... Paul, April 18th, the executive session, has that been approved for us to finalize and put out to the public?
I'll check with Betty, but yes, it should be. I think the subject matter is now all...
Then I make the motion, then that we approve.
Approved, are we approving both of them?
No, just the April 18th executive session.
Okay. Motion's been made by Bob, seconded by Mike, for approval of the April 18th executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four, zero, zero. Okay, minutes for the general, regular session on July 15, 2019. Moved by Bob. Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Four, zero, zero on both, Betty.
Thank you.
And we did them separately. Item number 174, subcommittee reports. Start with Nick.
I have nothing to do, report at this time.
Michael, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. About this time every year, I give a shout-out to our recreation department. Again, wonderful summer being spent here in Burlington under the direction of our recreation department. Just a week or so ago, they had their annual celebrate Burlington Day, was another outstanding turnout. The common was in Simon's Park, both gyms packed with families, concerts on the common, movies on the common. I mean, I just can't say enough. I mean, it looks wonderful, the men and women who maintain our parks and the town common and our town buildings, they just do a wonderful job, and it just happens, at this time of year, I like to recognize them for their efforts, so...
I concur with that, Mike, because you, look at the, if you look at the town common today, you can't fathom, there were literally thousands of people on the common a week ago, and they did fantastic job prepping. I know there's some work to be done on the sidewalks, it's in progress, but as far as the grounds itself, they look amazing, and hats off to the rec department for such a great day and night. Subcommittee?
I'm all set, other than to, and I'm sure you will discuss this, but I just want to congratulate you on another public safety night.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob. It was, our community safety night was held this past Wednesday at Wegmans. It's a public-private partnership. We have the police-fire, have with, police department, fire department have with Wegmans. The event was from 5:00 to 7:00. We had hundreds of police officers there, hundreds, oh, I wouldn't say hundreds of firefighters, but we had a good, I know we had five fire trucks, a fireboat. I know from the police side, there were at least 34, 35 motorcycles. It was just a great event. The weather held off. Officer Shane Thompson and, it was Craig Callahan, had some fun in the dunk tank. But it was very well attended, literally thousands of people in that garage, and it was just so great to see so many families, and I know Bob was there, I don't know if you guys were there, it was just such a crowd, I couldn't even...
That was a great time.
It was just...
Your wife was very busy with the kids all night.
People were just coming and coming and coming, so it was, not being able to see people because it was so crowded, again, and thank, thanks to Wegmans, another one of our community partners, as you stated in the last meeting, they come out for...
We hear their name mentioned all year long. They've been a great corporate neighbor since they moved here.
Fantastic, they are part of this town. That's about it that I have. Paul, anything on town history?
I have a couple of items. Mr. Chairman, we had a health insurance meeting this morning with the health insurance advisory group. I just want to report to the board that our costs are on budget for this year, so as you know, that's a very big number for us, and it's really something that's, we monitor very closely throughout the year. And what I want to point out is unbelievable spirit of cooperation between our employee, collective bargaining groups participating in their own health insurance, and how much it costs, and how can we save money by still providing good service to our employees. And I just want to thank all of our union reps that show up at that and provide very valuable contributions to us. It really is a great show of teamwork between management and labor in terms of trying to keep a good health insurance benefit, but also keep it affordable for our taxpayers. So that was, this morning, and we're on target for that thus far for this fiscal year. I don't want to jinx ourselves, you know, those things can turn around pretty quickly. And just a second thing?
One note on that, if I could, Paul.
Sure.
Because I'm in, what is my, my 10th year now. My first year, there was a lot of anxiety and chaos and funding issues related to the health insurance, and people were kind of going at it pretty good.
Yep.
And it wasn't until people took a look at that and said, "Well, we really need to fix it," and we started sitting down and the unions came together, and all the financial people in town came together, and we got good advice, and since then, I think we're an example for other communities on how to make this work.
We are, really is very unique how well it's run for a long time here in town, and again, I think the contributions from our employee groups, both in suggesting changes to the plans, as well as recognizing that this is a significant cost for the town, that we need to keep working to keep the cost down. I think it's, it really is a great spirit of cooperation. And just a second thing I want to point out to the board, a couple weeks ago, the ABCC came out and did a little training for Nick, Bob, Betty and I, a little seminar on...
And John.
Oh, John Nizio.
Was he there?
Yeah.
Yeah, he was there.
He was a test case, I think. He was one of the problems that they were trying to alert us to, but it was a great training. They came out individually, the director, they gave us a lot of good tips and best practices. And to that end, I know we wanted to update the board that at an upcoming meeting, we'll be bringing in Besito, Uno, and Beerworks, just to provide the board with that update. We have heard from Uno and Besito that they do have plans to transfer their licenses, but as we learned in the Beerworks case, there really is no timeframe until we set a timeframe at a public meeting. So we'll be calling those folks in and asking them for an update on the license, so we can begin the shot clock, so to speak, not to bring up shot clock, Jim, but I think that was the best practice that we learned in our discussions with the ABC, and I think that that's something, the board's always asking, you know, what's going on with this license? So I think if we put these things on a schedule, and when they become inactive for a period of time, it just becomes part of our routine. At X amount of date, we call them in, we ask them what's going on with the license, and at that point in time, the timeframe for them to do something with the license starts, and I think that'll be a good practice for us going forward.
So Besito and Uno were gonna start the clock, but Beerworks, their clock is already running?
Yes, it is.
Correct.
All right.
Correct.
Have we heard anything from them?
No.
That'll be interesting.
Well, like I said, I know Betty has heard from the other two that they actually do have plans in the works to transfer those licenses, but we don't want to just take it at word. I think it's important for us to start the timeframe on that, so that we can address it properly as we go along. And if, for some reason, the plans don't come through, we'll be in a better position to, you know, to discuss the license with the applicant, so...
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Betty, thank you for all the work you do on the alcohol-related stuff.
Thanks for your guidance.
Second, that one.
Thank you.
That it, Paul?
That's it.
All right. Any old business, new business? No citizens? Motion adjourned?
No move. Second.
All right. Motion by Bob, second by Nick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero, zero.